Ladies and gentlemen, and fellow Kentuckians, welcome to the Andrew Cooper Rider Show. I'm your host, of course, Andrew Cooper Rider, of course, Andrew Cooper Rider. And I thank you guys so much for joining me for another episode. I've got some great things to tell you about, some, some news here for you, some good topics to talk about. We got a couple of draft bills filed for the 2023 regular session. Okay, a couple of interesting bills there filed we'll talk about. And then, of course, we're going to hit upon the fact it looks like we're going to have a special session, maybe this week or next week regarding the Western, Eastern Kentucky flood relief, chit chat a little bit about that. The General Assembly finally stepping up on some diversity, equity, inclusion stuff over in the Contracts Review Committee. We did a show on this a couple of weeks ago where we were talking about how that was creeping in, all the money spent. And, and of course, that was really shared a lot online. Well, they stepped up and they've addressed the concerns to a degree. We'll talk about what they did, what it means, and then where we can keep fighting and improving upon that issue. And then finally, the, the red wave we're looking at in November is how big is it going to be? There's some doubts it's going to be as big as we think it is. Some, some conversation about are the Republican candidates too weak? I'll give you some hot takes on that, some hot takes on that. But before we dive into it, please like, comment, and share. If you're watching on Facebook, give it a like, put a comment on it. That helps the, the platform. It helps the way they spread it. Put a comment on it. And of course, hit that share button and share it. Watching on YouTube, or if you're watching on the podcast site there, make sure you subscribe to it. And then, of course, you can always catch this in the podcast form. If you don't want to sit there watching the whole video, do you want to just watch on Facebook and YouTube? You watch on Spotify, listen to on Spotify. The other episode before last, for some reason, didn't post on Spotify. So they're trying to fix that. But Spotify and Apple and all the places where you get your major podcasts, you can find this here show and tell your friends, tell your family, go to, tell them to go to ky podcast.com, ky podcast.com. And that's how I can share it with them. Now, finally, one more thing, please donate to the Campaign for Treasure. I'm staying on top of this stuff for you guys. Show me some love. Visit c4ky.com. That is C for the number four, ky.com. Hit that donate button and, and help out your favorite Kentuckian podcaster. I thank you guys so much. And let's go ahead and step into it. Let's first start off with, um, let's start off with Bill Wesley's bill. Bill Wesley files a draft bill for the 2023 regular session. So these are bills drafted to be considered next here in January of next year. So he files, this is Draft Bill Request 103. And it's a birth certificates bill that says birth certificates must be marked with the biological sex at birth, male or female. You cannot mark it X or non-binary or something else. They're either male or they are female. Now, of course, he's putting this in place because what we've seen is some of the lefties out there in the world, some of the people who, uh, who've decided that, um, well, biology doesn't matter anymore. And you can just be whatever gender you want to be, you know, you wake up, feel like a cat today, you'd be a cat today. You, I mean, I'm surprised, um, they even get a birth certificate. They say, look, birth certificates are for humans, right? They, they may think their kid is, is a snake, right? Or they may think their kid is a bunny rabbit, or maybe they don't want to put a species on their child. When their child grows up, they want them to be able to pick their species. And in the same way as well, they don't want to mark a gender because of course, that might be putting something on the kid that they don't feel is right. Um, and so they want to not mark a gender. So that way later on in life, the kid can make their own decision. Well, guys, I gotta tell you this, um, you're the born woman, born female. I get it. There's some very, very small percentage of times where there's actual medical things where people are born some kind of intersex or something like that. Um, and I think they might have to do an amendment to the bill where honestly, they're gonna have to talk about genitalia and see if the genitalia is not clear. Now, it's a sad, sad world we live in. It's a sad world we live in where Bill Wesley has to file this bill to say, look, doctors, you need to mark male or female when they're born. And, and it's attached to, and it, the bill says it's got to be based upon their biological sex, to say the least, sex to say the least. And I think that is really, really important. Uh, it's really important that we had to file this bill, right? That we've got that issue here in Kentucky with not putting the gender on. And so Bill's saying, put the gender on. Guys, think about this, think about this for a second. For those of you lefties who watch this, because for some reason you hate yourself, I don't know. I mean, I don't know why you'd watch me. Hey, maybe I give you good information. You may hate my takes on it, but you like the news side of it. Great. But for you guys who listen to this and, and are sitting there saying bigot or whatever, gender, whatever, whatever, just think about this for a second. Think medically, okay? Whether you're male or whether you're female really, really matters medically, right? There's certain things medically that can be okay, uh, that can be off with you if you're male versus female, right? Um, of course, you don't have, um, things like, you know, I don't know, um, ovarians and things like that, right? You don't have a uterus, um, unless you're a woman. And so, you know, those things matter medically. If you walk in saying my stomach hurts, and they think you're a guy, they're gonna treat that maybe differently than if you're a woman. If you talk in and say, oh, my stomach hurts, I'm nauseous, I'm getting cramps and things like that. They might ask if you're pregnant, if you're a woman. But if you come in and say you're a guy, they're not gonna think you're pregnant. They're gonna start treating you for something else, maybe giving you medicine you don't need. But it turns out at the end of the day, you may be pregnant, right? And so, which is weird, I saw a post the other day where it's like a transgender male and transgender female. So male and female, but they both switched, were in a relationship and having a child. And, uh, reminds me of the old meme from Rick and Morty that said, but instead of whatever they had, it says, you know, it, it seems like just being straight with more steps, right? Um, so it's, it's a strange world we live in. But Bill Wesley filing 103 saying, hey, gender is tied to what you're born as. That's gotta be on your birth certificate. No, no non-binary, uh, no X is there. So that's an interesting bill that has been filed by Bill Wesley. Once again, that's Draft Bill Request 103. And then we also have Democrat Rachel Roberts filing Bill Request 179. That's a female hydrine hygiene products, a sales tax exemption. So that is to get, of course, tampons, pads, things like that, um, to be exempted from sales tax. And I saw this bill, I went and searched to see if toilet paper was exempted. Cause I said, you know, if toilet paper is exempted, female hygiene products should also be, um, exempted. Now, in this case, I looked it up and it appears that in Kentucky, toilet paper is sales tax exempt. So with that being stated, I think it makes a lot of sense, a lot of sense for us to say that, saying female hygiene products untaxed. That's a fine thing for me. Of course, I'm always about cutting as many taxes as we can everywhere we can. And hey, female hygiene products, a lot of things are made and normally marked as a necessity, certainly fall into that category. Um, let's see here. So that is Draft Bill Request 179 by Democrat Rachel Roberts, female hygiene products, um, tax exempt, um, tax exempt, and, um, that certainly, I think is a good, good bill as far as that goes. Now, what we're also looking at, um, going into, uh, this, this next week or so is a special session they're looking at to address the Western Kentucky situation. Now, now, there's some conversation going on about what is the role of government here. Now, one thing that makes me uncomfortable, when I read what the Herald Leader, or some of these other liberal newspapers are saying about it, um, they're talking about how, well, you know, the, the General Assembly can afford to be generous, right? So they can afford to be generous because they have $2 billion in surplus from the budget. They got $2 billion in their rainy day account, in their savings account. And because of that, they can afford to be generous. Now, first off, I don't like the way we're, they can afford to be generous. Those are our tax dollars. It should be, we can afford to be generous with our money, if we're gonna say that at all. But I don't even like that word, we can afford to be generous. You, you took that money from us at gunpoint, pretty much. Maybe I couldn't, maybe you're going through something financially and, and you can't afford, you really, you can barely afford to put food on your table. And they're taking tax dollars from you and saying, well, you can afford to give to others. Maybe you can't. And so using that term, they can afford to be generous as a state, as if this isn't money that was taken from people. Let's keep that in mind. Makes me unnerved. Now, I'm not saying it shouldn't be addressed. I'm not saying we shouldn't help out of Eastern Kentucky. What I'm saying is it makes it uncomfortable. Here's the other thing that makes me uncomfortable here. Anytime we start talking about government doing charity work, government is horrible at charity work. I'll give you a perfect example. Let's take, um, the SNAP benefits program. So a lot of people agree SNAP's not of the welfare programs, not SNAP, food stamps, isn't the worst one, because it is, of course, tied to, um, it's tied to inexact amounts, not straight cash, right? You're controlled in what you can or can't buy with it. And then you get your course of food stamps, and you go and buy food stamps. Um, and you go down with your food stamps, buy whatever you want. Most people would agree that's not a bad thing. But here's something to bring up, here's something to note, right? The, the most, um, the, the administrative costs on the food stamp program, on the SNAP program federally is right around about 18%. So if they're spending a hundred dollars, eighteen dollars of it goes to administering, and then eighty-two dollars of it actually ends up benefiting the people who need the food. Now, what gets interesting is, is when you look at private charity, on the other hand, such as a food bank, um, some of the largest food banks in the world and, and the country, sorry, um, they operate, food banks operate with administrative costs of sometimes less than 1% most often. Uh, some of the largest food banks are operating with a point five, point eight percent, because part of it is, is they don't want to pay staff. They have a lot of volunteers. The government, it isn't good. They can't really bring in volunteers like that. Um, they in turn have to go ahead and pay people. So of course, they're limited on what they can do. So that leans into the administrative cost. But then also too, as well, it's difficult to coordinate volunteers, bring in volunteers. It's easier just to pay them if you view it as not your money anyways, or, or, or not as coming from the taxpayer, you may go ahead and say it. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do the work. I'm just saying first, we have to recognize that government doing charity work is innately expensive. It costs more for government to do charity work than these private charities. The same money in the hands of private charities, if, if we were able to, instead of being forced taxed by the government, could give the money to the private charities, the private charities could actually spend it a lot better in these situations. That's also why it makes me so uncomfortable when we see these disaster relief charities set up that people can give money to that's run by the government, because you've got, um, you know, Beshear did it for Western and Eastern Kentucky now, where they have this disaster relief thing where you can donate money to it. But here's the thing, right? Going into it, once again, I guarantee you give that same money to a private, uh, nonprofit charity, right? Um, the administrative costs on it won't be the same. And then also, you've got the cost that goes into accountability and, and that goes into the transparency of it. Because anytime government does something, if government is taking in money for a specific project, and it's going to act in charity donation, and you give money to it and it gets handed back out, we are gonna want to audit what happened with that money. And that in turn is going to cause more expenses on the taxpayers as well, compared to if you just give them that same money to a private nonprofit. Most people never even ask the question of what's going on there. We innately trust it. Um, we, we can look at their financials, of course, too, as well. And that gives us some idea as individuals, but they have a quote unquote profit incentive. They don't make a profit, but incentive to stay in business, to continue helping people. If they want to continue doing their work, they have to be good stewards of the money. So, you know, most time nonprofits are pretty, pretty, one, they, they spend it better. They, more of it reaches the person. And then on top of that, it, it costs us less to administer when we're using private nonprofits. So generally, they can get it done right, unless of course, it's the Clinton Foundation, in which case, um, well, I'd rather light my money on fire than give it to the Clinton Foundation, but that's just me. Anyway, so what gets interesting, um, is that terminology we're using of saying, well, they can afford to be generous. I hate that. But they're gonna do this special session. Now, the question is, is, is this special session going to just address Eastern Kentucky? And what parts is it going to address? Are we talking about providing infrastructure, rebuilding the infrastructure, the state-owned and local-owned infrastructure that was wiped out, maybe providing funds of that? Okay. Talking about giving straight cash to people, we're talking about giving loans to people to help them rebuild houses. This is an interesting situation, because you had flooding, not in floodplains. And I've understood, as I understand, if you're not in the floodplain, you can't get flood insurance. So it is a big, big issue out there. I'm not saying we shouldn't maybe do something for them. Like I said, I, I wish we could do it through private nonprofits. More money reaches them and it's a lot better. But I understand government takes so much already. And, and, and so maybe there's not as much money out there and government stepping in here. Maybe it's one of the times government can do something. Like I said, debatable, but, um, let's say they do go ahead and be generous, using the Herald Leader's words, which I, once again, hate it, hate it. If they do go ahead and say, I'm gonna be generous and giving out those funds, um, then we go ahead and say, okay, uh, what are we looking at with this special session? What's it gonna do? And the way special sessions work is they hammer out a deal beforehand, and then it gets passed in a day or two, and then they're back out of session. It leaves very little time for citizen input. I don't like that at all. We, they're hashing a deal out without citizens even getting to look at it or having input on it. I think that's wrong. Um, I do think that's wrong. I think we should get to have input on it. They move it, they move it quick. And then who knows what else they're tacking on. Remember, the last special session about this time last year was to deal with, uh, the save emergency over the, and to renew that save emergency, continue on these lockdowns and mandate policies and address some funding. But while they were doing things regarding schools and funding for hospitals, because they're short-staffed, because they're firing people, because they didn't get the thing. Um, while that was going on, they also, at that point, and as I covered in my prior podcast, decided to give 300, or I'm sorry, $410 million in taxpayer funds to Ford. So we could see another deal like that coming in here, especially if Beshear's been, uh, hopping one up and, and looking to, to give out more of your funds to other people. So we'll be watching that special session carefully, watch those bills carefully, see what they're be doing. We'll cover more on that probably next week. I think they'll have it between this podcast and next podcast, based upon the conversations I'm having with legislators. But we'll see what happens there. Now, a few weeks ago, I talked about the Contracts Review Committee and how they just kind of let pass on through a lot of contracts regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. I made actually some Facebook posts about it. I made, of course, this podcast about it. And since then, it appears they have listened, they have stepped up to the plate. And what we see is, is, is the Department of Education putting forward some DEI contracts and them getting knocked down, going as far as to say, now, what happens when the Contracts Review Committee says no? We'll get to that here in a second. But they're stepping up and saying, um, the Damian Sweeney, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and Belonging for the State Board of Education, something that probably shouldn't exist anyways. But anyways, um, he was apparently, his benefits package was a sweet, sweet 130K a year, 130,966. The Contracts Review Committee voted that contract down because he, uh, we don't need a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and, um, belonging, because that sounds communistic, of course. Uh, worried about equal, um, we need worrying more about outcomes and opportunities as government is wrong. And we've covered this in prior podcasts, government needs to worry, government creating equal outcomes guarantees people being shrunk down. And of course, this whole diversity, equity, inclusion is just code words for those CRT thoughts that really are, um, Marxist ideas that definitely lead to the destruction of, I believe, our American way of life, of equal opportunity and, and each person being in charge of their own destiny. But more importantly, not telling children that you're innately disadvantaged or advantaged because of the color of your skin, because that's wrong. That's wrong. We've talked about this. We said, we've, we've, we've even talked about what is a better parameter, because it's not color of skin, but it's more, uh, regional is, is a much better thing of looking at whether people are advantaged or disadvantaged. But even then, you know, if, if, I was listening to Jim Jordan, he's actually talking about this the other day, where he was talking about how, you know, as, as long as, and, and, you know, this was something that I read from one of my favorite people, Zig Ziglar always talked about, as long as you allow yourself to be a victim of your current situation, you'll never rise above it. To say, in other ways, Zig Ziglar used to say, um, take where you are right now. Is there something, do you believe there's something you can do over the next two weeks to make your life worse? Lie, cheat, steal, yell at somebody, do something bad, right? Now, do we also, can you also say that there's something that you can do over the next two weeks that would make your life better? Maybe you start working out, maybe you eat better, um, maybe you spend more time with family, do some things you've been meaning to do, do, but there's something, get more sleep, maybe. There's something you can do to make your life better. If you answer yes about those questions, everybody should, because of course, it's the case, then what you've stated is, is your life can be better or worse, and the decision is entirely up to you. And that is the American dream, that you can control your own destiny and DEI and belonging and all this other Marxist BS that they're trying to pump into these kids, doing the work of the CCP is really just that. Um, and we need to be standing up to it. And so they, they knock down this contract. They also knocked down in Northern Kentucky, um, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion training for $54,000. And then also a contract to create, uh, six modules out in Ashland for 309,540. Now, what happens here? What happens if they knock these contracts down? Well, of course, then they go to the, um, Cabinet for Finance Secretary, and he can override the, basically, he's overriding the veto the Contract Review Committee did. But, but with that being done, when the next time they're in regular session, when they're setting their own agenda, because during special session, the governor sets the agenda. So they can't address this during that. They can go ahead and vote in and say, any contracts disallowed by the Contracts Review Committee is hereby terminated, and you cannot bring a contract back like it. And so what they're doing is, is they're setting up this list. And so they may be able to overcome it. But if we push on our legislators come to special session, we tell them to follow up on what the Statutory Committee on Contracts has done to go ahead and knock down these diversity, equity, and inclusion things, we can start to see an improvement and start to push back on this. But then we gotta watch out, because they'll come up with a new term. Because when we caught them on CRT, they moved to this DEI. And, and, and I think they're starting to move from DEI to this SEL, this social and emotional learning, uh, side of things. And, and, and they're gonna keep trying to move. We gotta stand on top of it. We gotta stay in the spirit and all that. We gotta do it. Now, though, we need our General Assembly to follow through. We need our General Assembly, when they get into office, to say, we're not gonna allow these contracts. We need our General Assembly to step up and really grow back. And we see Bill Wesley's got 103 that he files. And now we see the Contract Review Committee stepping up. And so they gotta take a stand and follow through, make some gutsy moves. How you make a gutsy move to say, you know, we were wrong to create the, the, the Commission on Equal Opportunity and Race, Commission on Race here in Kentucky. We are wrong to do that. We're going to take that committee down. We're gonna remove it. Which, by the way, when the citizen members of that committee is a lobbyist, but putting that to the side, um, I don't know why lobbyists can sit on committees, but we should probably deal with that situation. But we're gonna go ahead and we're going to, um, disband that committee. We're gonna get rid of it, because that is just endorsing these Marxist ideas. We're gonna step up to the plate. We're gonna come back and we're going to make sure we're coming back. And, and this whole diversity, equity, inclusion, all this BS, we're getting rid of it. We're stepping up to the plate. We're standing strong. And please, General Assembly follows through. So the Contract Review Committee did their first step. They moved from just greenlighting all this stuff to at least making a substantive stance against it. And we should say thank you. We should say thank you. You'll see a Facebook post about this, probably even before this podcast goes out, probably post about this on Monday. The podcast goes out on Tuesdays, but I'll make the, the post on, obviously, I recorded before Tuesday. Um, but I'll make the post on Monday. So go back and please, uh, go ahead and share that. So they gotta step up and stand and, and, and say enough is enough. We've seen a victory for what's right. We need to, to continue to stand in support of it. And, and also, if our legislators are doing good things, we need to go ahead and give them those kudos. So Contract Reviews Committee, kudos for listening to the, how upset the people were of the diversity, diversity, equity, and inclusion contracts, and stepping up and knocking them down. One more thing I want to talk about, we're seeing worries about this federal red wave, this possible, you know, we, we believe there's gonna be a red wave. We believe the Republicans are gonna win because of how terrible the economy is, how awful Biden is and everything else. But there's starting to be indications that that may not be the case. And so it leaves the question of why, what is happening? Now, a lot of people want to say it's because we have bad candidates. Um, you know, these Trumpians, basically, they're trying to spin the story that, I believe this, Dallas Republicans are trying to spin a story, saying that these Trumpian candidates, uh, cannot, are not good candidates, and they can't win. And if we keep listening to Trump, we're gonna keep losing, right? I think that's what they're trying to say, which is interesting, because Trump, Trump is more popular than ever now, especially after that FBI raid. So that doesn't make a whole lot of sense for them to claim that. So, so what is it? What do I think it is? Actually, I don't think it's the fact that, uh, these Trumpian candidates or anything else. I think it is the Republican voter is slightly demotivated. And you'd say, why? They hate Biden, they hate everybody else. Why are they demotivated? And I say it's because of some of the actions that we have seen, uh, um, the, the state, the Senate doing, uh, here recently. They seem to have flocked on this, they, they were not supposed to pass this basically as Green New Deal and this reconciliation package and everything else. And, and McConnell and Company up there in the Senate were supposed to, um, they, they cutting deals on it and everything else to stop it from happening. And it happened. So they give them gun control. They give them some other bipartisan stuff, right? And, and what do we see here? So it de-motivates a Republican voter. Because if you think to yourself, well, what are they even going to do? Because we just saw them pass red flag gun laws. So what are they even going to do, right? And if that's what you're thinking, which I'm sure a lot of Republican voters are, I know I'm thinking it. I'm like, golly, you guys just passed red flag gun laws. That's certainly de-motivating to a lot of Republicans. And so I think they've overestimated. I think they've overestimated. They've said, well, people really, really hate the Democrats. So they'll vote for Republican no matter what. Not realizing that, no, they won't vote for Republican no matter what. You gotta show that you're, it's not enough to just say, we're gonna stop the Democrats. You need to show us how. Tell us how, and have your actions shine through, saying it's not enough to stop the, see, I think a lot of these Republican legislators and at the federal level believe we're in a high school debate. This is a nice prim high school debate. And that's not what we're at. Look at what the Democrats are doing. They have drug us into a bar fight. We are in a bar fight. And we gotta start standing up and fighting like that. We've got to step up to the plate and say enough is enough. And, and we're not gonna let these things pass. But instead, we see people like McConnell and a bunch of other Republicans, at least 10 others, um, coming through and voting yes on red flag gun legislation, because they believe, now, their thought process there was, well, people are really dissatisfied with the economy and this whole, uh, gender stuff going on with the Democrats. And they are. That, that is pushing a lot of people away. I met somebody today, lifelong Democrat change because of all the gender stuff going on. It makes him uncomfortable, makes him worried about their kids. And so people are saying, look, you know, we're worried about all those things, uh, that we talked about. And, um, and so because of that, they're definitely not gonna vote for a Democrat. But maybe we can attract over some more Democrats if we soften our stance on gun control. I believe that was the thought process of people like Mitch McConnell that voted yes on that, is they said, look, I'm in a purpley state. So one, if I, if I'm easy on this vote, I can go ahead and, and help me secure my state, show that I can be bipartisan, reasonable, blah, 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 blah. And then also, we can help attract over some Democrats that are on the edge and see Republicans, maybe they can be a little bit more reasonable on issue like gun control. That's their mind. I'm not saying they are. I'm saying they're unreasonable on issue of gun control. We should convince them that our position's the best, not change it to fit them, but that's besides the point. And so they, they pass that to think, okay, we're gonna bring over these voters. And then they think, well, these people, they're not gonna vote for a Democrat. So they're gonna be, have to vote for Republicans. So it doesn't matter. People care about gun control, right? Second, and that's a big thing. I mean, anytime you see Republicans campaigning, especially in primaries, they say, I'm pro-gun, and I'm pro-life. If you're not pro-gun and you're not pro-life, you don't have a shot as winning as a Republican. So I think a lot of them adapt that without even really meaning it as obvious based upon that red flag vote. But why do they adopt that? Why do they have to say that? You have to say that because of the fact that it's such an important issue to Republicans. It's incredibly important issue to them. And so when you're weak on it, it de-motivates them. And now, they don't want to show up to the polls. That's what I think it is. I think you've de-motivated fossil voters. I think that's part of it. The other thing is, is that they're playing a game, anytime you see polling too, it's gonna be hard to judge. Because you're gonna wanna, when, when you're doing a poll and you're trying to poll probable voters, what they look at is in the biz, something called, uh, we look at historical voter turnout. And so to, to distill down the list, you're gonna look at people that show up maybe to three out of the last four elections. And that's who you're gonna call. So that way, you're, you're getting a pretty good list of probable voters. But that doesn't capture individuals. And I'm sure there's a lot of you probably listen to this podcast that haven't voted in three out of the last four elections, if you think about it. You've maybe voted in two, maybe you've only voted in the presidential elections. You don't normally vote midterms. Or you've only voted in, like I said, two out of the last four, maybe the last president, last midterm. You don't vote in the off-year elections, right? And so those voters like that, or maybe they're newly fired up, they're gonna break red. And I think they're not exactly, uh, accounting for that as well. I mean, we won't know till Election Day, but it's worth stating. And then also appears there might be some money woes going on with the Senate Republican Caucus. They're at the federal level. They're yanking some spending in some places, some $10 million in ad spending. Now, they say they're just moving it around. But is, if their donations are down, what's that say? Why are they down? Are they down because you've done, turned off the NRA and all these other people that, that feel so strongly about guns? Because they think, why donate to you if you're just gonna vote like a Democrat anyways? And I know, and I hear those Republicans out there that say, well, you know, you're still not as bad as a Democrat. Democrat'd be much worse. If you had nothing but Democrats, it'd be awful. And I'm not saying that's not true. I'm just saying, how do you sell that to somebody to turn out? They already think their vote barely matters, because, you know, it appears that it's, it's corrupt systems and such that whoever got the most money matters. whoever got the most money matters, or, or maybe there are individuals that believe, hey, you know, we haven't done enough to secure our elections, make sure they're fair. So they already maybe don't wanna turn out, because they don't think it matters. And then on top of that, you're going to say, look, we're gonna behave in such a way, we're gonna behave in a way that de-motivates you. I think that's a bad calculation. I think they calculated bad. They've taken for granted people way too much because of how bad Joe Biden is. And that might be, um, causing people to not turn out quite as much. That could be possibly what they're seeing. I don't know, but that's, that's something, um, that's my take on that. So there you go. We covered a couple of things today, um, covered a couple of great news. Please share this podcast with others. Get the word out there. Spread the word. Tell people about it. Once again, visit C, the number four ky.com. That's c four ky.com to go ahead and make those donations. Of course, like, comment, share, tell people about the podcast. This is the news you're not getting anywhere else. They're not covering it. I, I have yet to see anybody else cover this. You know why? Because I will go online and research these things directly from the source, Directland, LRC sites or other state sites. I'm not looking at the media to find what I talk about. So that's an important, I, I think that's why it's real important to go out there and share everything that you can that, uh, we're doing here. Spread the word. Um, stay informed. We've got a few events too coming up as well. If you wanna get updated about those events, text the word liberty to 33777. Once again, text the word liberty to 33777.